The meeting of Past Independent School District Board of Trustees in special session on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020 via telephonic and/or video conferences in accordance with suspension of certain provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act is authorized by the Governor of Texas and the State's Attorney General at 12:01 PM. Board members present are Ms. Maricel Kiana, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent, none. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Mr. Kendrick, will you please give the invocation today and Mr. Fernandez the pledges to the flag?
Sure, let us pray. While we thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunity to meet together. And still a confusing situation, and we know that you're in charge of everything. We pray for our school leaders and our superintendent and all of our employees as we get ready to start transitioning into teleprompter virtual schools here. We pray that that timetable will still hold. We pray for all those involved as they work to set up this with their parents, their students, and their teachers. We know that this is a very complicated time, and we have been through the spring, and our people have reacted greatly, as has our students, and we pray that that will continue. We pray for all those who are affected by the COVID, for their health, and we pray especially for Billy, as he fights the situation that he is trying to find out what's going on. We thank you for the first responders who spend their time protecting us. And Father, we pray especially for our country that is in turmoil like we've never seen because of godless people that seek to destroy our nation. Father, we just pray for our leadership, we pray for our country, and we pray for your will to be done as we do your work today, in your name we ask you, amen.
Amen.
I pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which the widget stands. Under God, liberty, and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and the.
Were there any questions for Jody regarding policy?
I'm sorry, thank you very much. I didn't, I forgot about policy.
On page 20 of the 15, Manual Update 115?
Yes.
And it's the page not, it's 10 and 20, I guess both, but anyway.
Okay.
Tell me about this half grade and not half grade, and it's saying it's very confusing to me that they're allowed to take the half that they didn't pass, but now this change seems to say that, well, we'll make up some kind of apparatus for them to take the course. What is it?
So, I think what the goal was here, and Karen May can pipe in if they've got a little bit more information, but my understanding of that was that there, there's been some revisions to the administrative code regarding how we can award partial credit. And so what we could do in different things is look at is that you look at how long the course is, and you give partial credit for half of the course, not necessarily what's in the first semester versus what's in the second semester. So for those school districts who are delaying the start of school, they don't have a normal semester and a normal amount of grades before December, and so they may want to go, you know, the, and count the grades from the fall and one of the grades from the spring as partial course credit for passing purposes if the kid was passing at that time, but then failed closer to the end of the year. I could be.
Karen, do you want to chime in on anything additional to that?
I got this, I got the impression that it was a semester backed up by another semester, that the grade one semester in the same course or same class, I'm not sure which, because it's very confusing to me that you can get, you pass the first half, but then the second half they're saying, well, whatever we decide to do, we can work something out so they pass it, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I'm getting on.
I'm gonna have to look at it, Deanne, and be able to talk about it with Joyce before I could say anything about that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It seems so ambiguous. I really would appreciate that, Karen.
Will we get to an answer? We'll have her on here, or?
She's getting on right now, she might be on, but, but let's, let, let me have her read the things, talk to Jody, and be ready.
And so remember too, that a lot of our grading procedures are actually in our regulations for that, and not necessarily in local policy. So these are changes to local policy essentially saying that we have those flexibilities and that we can implement that in those regulations as the administrative code has been amended by TEA due to COVID and in response to that. So at the current time, even though we're amending policy to allow for those sorts of things, we've not addressed that, I don't think, as far as I know, in our local and administrative regulations that govern how we're going to assign grading and provide credit.
I agree with that. And again, we'll go over it with Joyce, and I'll be more confident with my answer.
Thank you.
Do you want to, Dr. Powell, do we want to pull this one until we've had more time to look over it?
We don't vote on it until the general meeting.
Oh, okay, good.
That'll give her an opportunity to get Joyce in here.
Yeah.
If we want to pull it at that time, absolutely, we can.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions on policy? It's a pretty big update.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. So it was a lot of what was left over after the last legislative session that was not included in Update 114. It was delayed so that they could incorporate the changes related to Title IX and those new regulations that were published in May, towards the end of the school year. And so they kind of held off on distribution of this until they could make those changes as well.
Okay, I had another question.
Okay.
Academic graduation, the one right below it. Beginning with students enrolled in the 12th grade in 2021-22, HB3 will require students to complete and submit a federal or Texas application for financial aid to graduate. What does that mean?
They have to submit a FASPA application prior to graduation. It's one of those graduation requirements now.
What is the reasoning behind it?
The legislature wants students to complete FASPA documents?
Make students eligible for scholarships.
Yes.
Grants, other college funding. It's also part of our requirements for our program that we piloted at Doby and Sam Rayburn, as well as South Houston this year, the Promise Program, this college, so it helps them qualify for the opportunity to continue on post-secondary.
Thank you.
I thought that that, what if, what if a student, I mean, wouldn't have qualified anyways?
Again, it's part of the Promise Program, and the legislature has, of course, asked for it as well, trying to give more students opportunities. Karen, do you want to speak to if students refuse to complete it?
There are waivers available to work with them, but they are required for graduation purposes right now to complete that form.
Okay.
Well, it certainly doesn't hurt anything to apply for it, I understand it, but I'm surprised it's the law.
I know.
Right now, it's the law and part of graduation. We were very surprised also.
Yeah.
Wow.
Big Brother's watching, isn't he?
Yeah. Pretty scary.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's adjourn to closed session. What time is it now? 12:07?
12:11.
12:11. Okay. Pursuant to Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, non-renewals, and terminations of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071, to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the code of professional responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene in open session as soon as we can. Thank you. We're going to reconvene in open session, and it is 1:35 PM. Thank you for your patience, and we welcome each of you to the meeting. I will ask our secretary, Susan, do we have any public comments?
I don't know if she has unmuted herself, but to my knowledge, we do not have any public comments. Susan, will you let us know if that is not the case, please? Okay, she is saying we do not have any public comments.
Okay, then let's move on to consideration of possible approval of administrative personnel. And I'm going to call on our Personnel Chairman, and that is Maricel Kiana.
Madam President, I move to approve Addendums A through D.
Motion by Ms. Kiana.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Ms. Kiana, will you introduce those, please?
Absolutely. I would like to first, congratulations, give my congratulations, our congratulations to Ms. Karina Diaz. Is she here?
I'm here.
There you are. Congratulations to you for the position of our new counselor and parent coordinator at Burnett Elementary.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Congratulations, we're excited for you. Do you have anybody with you this afternoon?
I do. I have a full house.
Introduce them.
My sister, Jackie, my husband, Hector, my baby girl, Dan, and my mom, Margarita.
Well, congratulations, they look very excited for you, as everybody is else on this call.
And if you guys. I have my principal, Mr. Lee, he's on the Zoom call.
Yes, very good. There you go.
Congratulations, we're all very excited for you.
Thank you all very much.
And next, we have, we would like to welcome to Pasadena ISD, Ms. Bianca Barnes. I know I saw her name.
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Pretty face out there, congratulations, welcome to Pasadena ISD, you're our new licensed behavior analyst with special education.
Yes.
Welcome, do you have anybody with you this afternoon?
I do not, so I recently relocated from Orlando, Florida, and I did move with my seven-year-old, but she's in Colorado for the summer, but I feel so bad, so I just had this picture of her, so it was just me and her here, and he sent some love for her getting back home here with me.
Well, that's beautiful, well, thank you for sharing that, and welcome, you have a big family here, as you can see, and you will, you will definitely feel that when you start with us shortly, so congratulations.
Thank you.
We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
And our next lady is not with us this afternoon, but when you see her around, please tell her congratulations to Ms. Teddy Lowcochrane for the new position, not new position, but for the position of diagnostician with special education. And last but certainly not least, congratulations to Ms. Brenda Melendez for the position of Assistant Principal at Queens Intermediate School.
Whoa.
Congratulations, we're all very excited for you.
Thank you.
And I know I see somebody behind you, so I know you have people with you.
I do. Sure, so I have my husband on the phone, this is him, but I have my, my work family also, so I have my campus coach, Walter, I have my wonderful mentor, principal, Ms. Judy Diaz, I have Linda Flores, my assistant principal, I have another campus coach, Heather, and I have my Queens new family on, on the Zoom as well.
Yes.
Hi there.
Congratulations.
Awesome.
Very, very nice, well, congratulations, we certainly see your excitement, and we are very excited for you. Everyone else is here as well, so we're excited for everything, what's to come for you, and congratulations to all of you, and that's it.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Kiana. Next, next is consideration of possible approval of amended 2020-2021 academic calendar.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion.
The board members, as you know, we have an election coming up on November 3rd, and we were contacted by the county regarding taking that day away from our calendar for student purposes. They do have no problem with us doing a staff development day, and we know, hopefully, we'll be needing that staff development day as we reengage with more and more students face-to-face. So to be helpful to them, as well as helpful to our families and our community, because they expect a large turnout for the November 3rd election, we're going to ask that that be moved to a professional development day for safety reasons, as you can imagine, as well as traffic and other things that would impede having a successful regular school day. The other days that we shaded on the calendar in June, and of course, we have not made any changes to our school calendar as far as our start date, but this has been a learning experience, to say the least, with COVID-19. So we have shaded some days just to let our families know if at any time we had to shut down completely due to the virus or the disruption of school, then we would have those days available to us as makeup days. You know, that is not a goal, that is not something we want to see happen, but we just want to be very transparent in saying there's a possibility that we could use those days in June for makeup days only if needed and approved by the board.
Very good.
I have a question, Dr. D. Are they going to use some of our schools for voting locations?
Darla, do you want to expand on how many schools they're using, because it has grown significantly?
Yes, right now, we have been notified that they are planning to use 45 of our campus locations. There may be more, but 45 are what we know at this point.
I just have a suggestion. The last time, we had several complaints from seniors that the voting machines were placed too far for them to get to. Can we make some consideration for putting the machines close to the door where the voters are going in?
I will talk with the county, I know right now, they have requested use of cafeteria and gym areas due to the number that we are expecting, so I will work with the county and see what we can do in that capacity.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion?
I was just going to say, with taking the day off, I think it's going to help with parking and closer parking for our senior citizens who might be coming to our schools to vote, so that'll be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? We're taking a vote on the amended 2020-2021 academic calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration of possible approval of the revisions to the 2020-2021 Student Code of Conduct.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiana, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of a four-year contract with HISD School Health and Related Services for the 2020-2021, uh, 2020-2025 school year. This is for Shar's.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Kiana, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of partnership support agreement with communities and schools Southeast Harris County for the 19, I'm sorry, 2020-2021 school year.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the Operation Connectivity Interlocal Acquisition Agreement with Region 4 Education Service Center for Technology Purposes, including ratification of the superintendent's August 4th, 2020 execution of the agreement.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion.
So board members, as you know, you've been very generous in allowing for us to purchase additional devices, so all of our students are covered pre-K through 12. We were hoping to get reimbursed through Operation Connectivity, but I got a phone call that made me aware that we should approach computers through this method, because there probably would not be funds for reimbursement. So this is allowing us to purchase some computers with the state paying half, and then us approaching other authorities, local and state authorities, to help pay for the remaining portion of that, those devices. I will keep you posted on the success of our efforts as we communicate with the county and the local cities that we do serve. So again, TEA has been working through this and paying for half of these computers, and then, of course, we're working with other local agencies to pay for the remaining half, but it was definitely something we wanted to take advantage of for our students and our community and our bottom line.
Absolutely.
How much are we talking about, Deanne?
This was 10,500 computers, so our portion would be a little bit over a million. Carla, you correct me with my invoice memories, but it was a quick turnaround. We're talking, there were days to decide if we were going to participate or not, so it was 1.2, Ms. Sullivan, that they would pay for, and then 1.2, we'd have to match, and then try to seek reimbursement from other agencies such as your city and your county government. So we're in the process of that now, and I will keep y'all updated on that.
I thought Marath said he had you covered for these costs.
We are, of course, writing in reimbursements, not just through the state funds, and also through FEMA, but to say that we're totally covered, Mr. Kendrick, until I see the, the check in the mail, I don't feel very covered. I don't feel covered at all, I feel like all the money's going out and nothing's coming in right now.
I understand.
But we lived that through Harvey, and we had faith, and we came out whole, so let's hold our faith for a little longer.
There you go.
Okay, other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next, consideration of possible adoption of TASB localized policy update 115 affecting the local policies designated on the attached instruction sheet.
I'll make the motion.
Questions, go ahead.
I'll make the motion, but I think we should exclude EL Local for further consideration until we have more information.
Okay, wait, tell me, tell me which one that is, Marshall?
Is that EI? EI?
EI, Local.
PI Local?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Motion has been made by Mr. Kendrick, did I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion. Now, this is voting on the localized policy with the exception of PI Local, which we'll come back with more information.
Ms. Morgan, this is Ms. Ackman again, and I did consult with Jody and Joyce over the recess that we had just now, and I must say that this is something we have been doing for years, they are just changed the terminology to have a course instead of semester. We've been yearly averaging forever, so this does not change at all what we're doing, it only calls it half a course, because they're worried about the semester breaks for a lot of people who might be starting school in October, and so they changed the wording of just what they're calling it, but we've been doing this for years, this is not a change in any way to our policy.
Okay, thank you.
My question is, it's not a change in policy, but the way it's written, it sounds like, oh, well, they get credit for half, and then we'll do whatever we need to do to get into the second half.
Well, that's not.
That's kind of what it reads like.
I understand totally that, what it sounds like. What happens, and what we've been doing, is if a student fails one semester but passes the other semester, we can still grant them the half credit for the semester they passed, and then they can go back and do credit recovery for the other semester.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Kendrick, I would ask, do you still want to pull that?
No.
Okay, can you reword your motion? Let's just.
Sure. Okay, let me find the motion here. Just a minute.
Madam President, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but do we have a quorum? I have a doctor's appointment that I need to go to.
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'm going to leave the meeting then.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize we were going to run this late.
It's okay.
Okay, my motion, Vicki, is that we accept the policy update on 115, Section 12, localized policy update, okay?
Okay. Okay, is that going to be a separate motion? Jody, did you hear that?
So, yes, Marshall, are you clarifying that you are withdrawing your motion, your original motion?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so he's withdrawing his original motion, and he is now open to make the second motion, which I understand that he's expressing he wants to be the full adoption of TASB update 115.
May I hear a second to that, please?
Okay.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, and this is to, Mr. Kendrick pulled his first motion before action, this is consideration of possible approval of adoption of TASB localized policy update 115. So is there any discussion at this time? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. If you would, for the, for the record, if you would vocalize your approval or not approval, sometimes that's not, not coming through, so consideration of possible adoption of local district update 2020 through 20, 20, wait a minute, 2020.03 affecting FFH Local.
I'll move.
Second.
That was motion by Ms. Kiana, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the, of the 2020 budget, I'm sorry, 2020 Bridge Up at Menager Magic Grant, Bridge Funding Grant Award in the amount of $56,750.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the 2020-2021 Environmental Defense Fund, EDF Grant Contract Amendments between EDF, Pasadena Memorial High School and Pasadena High School.
So move.
So move.
So move.
Motion by, motion by Ms. Keanu, seconded by Mr. Fernandez, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The as have it, motion carries. Now, we're going to have a brief overview of asynchronous virtual learning plan, and I think that's Dr. Hickman.
That's me, and I'm going to need to share my screen. I think we're set up for that. Let's see here. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right, great. I will make this as brief as possible. Later, probably in September, you'll be asked to actually vote on a plan, but you'll get well ahead of time so that you can read through it because it will be an extensive plan. So we plan to do our remote work in Pasadena asynchronously as defined by the state. And the state requires us to have a plan approved by both you guys and the state in order for us to receive ADA for this instruction. Oh, it's not turning. All right, I'm going to stop my share and see why it won't move. Let's see if it moves now. It does not move.
You're hitting enter and on your other screen, the right arrow button. There you go.
Our brilliant superintendent has rescued me and I will pay her later. All right, so asynchronous instruction is defined by the state basically as all participants do not need to be virtually present at the same time. And I've added, because this is what Mr. Matos has added, for the entire day. Our plan is for many of our classrooms to begin their lessons synchronously. So that means that they'll all be live, like on a Zoom or a Google Meet, to introduce a lesson, to introduce student work, and then allow independent work. But the teacher would remain available to the students throughout the period. So it would be a reliable schedule that the kids would know about, and they would know when they are going to be meeting live with the teacher and when they'll have time to do independent work, but still access the teacher. So the, the requirements of the state is for us to complete an attestation agreeing to requirements falling into these four categories. So we will stop at the end of each section. If you have questions, we'll address those questions as we go. So we're going to start with their requirements under the topic instructional schedule. So the, the plan must include teacher-student interaction. Again, that's predictable. Teacher availability for students is planned in advance. Students can access instructional support from teachers throughout the day. And again, they know when they can get that. And that the academic work actually is equivalent to face-to-face. And it's, it's not random. It's planned in advance, it's defined by the day, and the families know when these things are occurring. So students will have a daily schedule, and the student and teacher will have consistent interaction each and every day. So remote instruction is supposed to mirror the face-to-face experience with varied assignments and activities. The activities and assignments are completed each day in the student L M S. We plan to use our L M S in face-to-face interactions every day and in, and the virtual at-home learning. So that if students go back and forth, it's an equivalent kind of experience for them. You know, of course, it's going to be nice when the kids are face-to-face and have a live teacher there right in front of them in the classroom. But they will still turn in assignments and pull activities off of their computer instead of passing out a worksheet. So that's the idea there. One of the other rules is that you have to have a plan for student access to academic material at all times. As you guys know, because you've spent a lot of money on making sure that all of our students will be provided a device if they need it, and will also be provided internet access as needed. We have worked through these learning management systems for each grade level so that really, the only thing that we got out of our surveys last spring, except for way to go, thank you so much. I mean, our, our students, teachers, and parents were very generous with their praise. But one thing is they were confused some by the many places they had to go to get their materials. So we have narrowed that down, that everybody will go in through the portal class link, and they'll only go to one L M S. So hopefully that will solve some of that confusion. Then additionally, we have to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students who have been identified with a disability. And we are making sure that accommodations or modifications are provided to students based on their individual education plans if they're learning in either mode. So that is the end of what is required in the instructional schedule part. Does anybody have questions about that specific piece? All right, I'm going to keep going. So the next one is materials design. And our curriculum and materials really has to mirror the robust T E C's alignment curriculum that we already have in place. We have additionally purchased specific tools and resources that support both asynchronous and face-to-face learning. Now, we've been doing DreamBox, as you guys know, iStation. We actually have a thing called Gizmos, which has been online science labs. So if we didn't have all the equipment in a school, if for some reason we had to do labs online, we've been able to do that for a while. And it's been very helpful to kids to be able to redo those labs at home. So we're continuing that and then adding other things like Khan Academy, which we've again had, but we're doing a more robust version of that. And of course, we're going to continue the use of the Connect curriculum. We have fourteen thousand students going to be involved in that. And really, that was a blessing to so many schools in the spring because the kids really transitioned beautifully into that. So many schools have been added. We're going to have forty-six schools involved and twelve of them implementing fully. So we're excited about that for those students. Also, again, you have to make sure that you have materials designed specifically to support students with disabilities and English language learners. We have purchased additional digital tools to meet their needs and to support their success while learning remotely. This has been, especially for our children with disabilities and severe disabilities, this remote learning has been a challenge to our teachers and to our students and families. So we have really tried to make sure that we have all materials necessary for their success. We hope this fall, doing a better job there. Okay, and that is the end of that section. Any questions? I'll keep going. All right, so student progress is something that has to be measured throughout the, the time period that the students are remote. So we are expecting student progress. It's, it needs to be planned in advance, defined by the day, and ties into the overall course coverage. So teachers have to do lesson plans, is basically what that's saying. Students have to have feedback provided each week. You have to have systems in place to measure progress. So the grades have to be continued, and they have to inform instructional practices. So like we've been doing, I think you've been hearing about something called Pi Time. So that's in-school tutoring and intervention. So we're going to keep those things in place even while we're remote. We're excited about many of the schools, not just the Connect schools, that are going to install that mentoring piece every week, making sure that they're setting goals with individual kids, checking on their progress, looking at how things are going, and really trying to keep a temperature on each kid. And making sure that, that they're making the progress they need to make and not running a temperature. All right, now, this is really important to all of us because this is how we are going to be able to get ADA for our work. There's three requirements in asynchronous that's very different than synchronous, what the state calls synchronous, and with the state, and the face-to-face kids. Both of those methods, at nine thirty, you take attendance and you see who's present. In asynchronous, you have three different ways each day that you can check attendance. And the kids only have to do one of these things one time in a day to get the attendance for them. So they have to show daily progress in their learning management system we've been talking about. They have to show student-teacher interaction. So that can be on the phone, in a Zoom, in a small group, in a tutoring session, on a text, on an email. Any of those student-teacher interactions would count for that within a school day and actually all the way till eleven fifty-nine that night. And the teacher, the following day, can look and see number two, to see, make sure number two happened. But more importantly, number three, completion or turn-in of an assignment from a student to the teacher. And any of these ways, by eleven fifty-nine, means that you get ADA. Now, while ADA is super important to the success of our district, we are really interested more in daily attendance in every class. That won't be for ADA purposes. It'll be for student engagement purposes and making sure that our students are successful in their coursework. So while we, we think we can get close to a hundred percent attendance for the students that are engaged at all, we will be working very hard to make sure that they are engaged and working throughout the day so that they learn academically what they would have in a traditional classroom, hopefully even more. The grading policy has to remain the same in face-to-face or in remote. We can't have, we cannot have two different policies. All right, any questions on that student progress piece? All right, our fourth section is, how are we implementing this? So one of the big plan requirements is that you must have robust professional development for our teachers. And honestly, this is another area that our teachers said, hey, we, we had training, but it wasn't on how to do online training. And they requested that. So we started working on that before the state said we had to. And our I N D team and our specialists and a lot of other people have worked together to make sure and support our teachers this summer with training on the L M Ss and how to really do online teaching differently and better than what we did in the spring, definitely, and even better than sometimes how we do face-to-face. So we've done three things. We had a robust summer training that we offered to all of our teachers that included, they could either take the training or say, okay, I already have that. I can do the next thing. It was a whole system of trainings, including specifically, how do you better do online teaching? Then we are going to continue having our focuses and what we call our Connect Cadres for all teachers throughout the school year. So as we continue to learn, we'll continue to share that. And then finally, we're having ongoing embedded coaching for our teachers by having those campus content specialists and coaches on campuses helping, you know, they'll go into the Zooms. They'll be meeting with the teachers to help that improve. And also, we will have Leadership 101 and Instructional Leadership to coach our administrators on how to best monitor and support teachers online when they're, you know, I guess going in and out of Zooms and Google Meet classrooms and watching that interaction, monitoring the L M Ss to see the student progress, et cetera, and then trying to get help and support for our teachers. And finally, the last thing, yay, is parent engagement is super important. Making sure that campuses are connecting with the families in order to support the learning at home. This is hard, hard, hard on parents. They did not sign up to be our instructors. And, but we need them desperately for our children to have success. So we, I N D again, has set up a parent onboarding site where they can access all kinds of different information and trainings around those L M Ss, around Skyward, around our new portal system. What's the communication plan from each campus? What's the schedule for each campus? The campuses are working with our parent coordinators, and thank you very much for adding those parent coordinators and putting those in place because we think they will be very instrumental. So I just want to close by saying, we know, we know that remote learning presents many challenges for our students and for their families. We're facing those same challenges ourselves, based on new requirements every day from the same. Our teachers, principals, and other employees have been working hard, hard, hard over the summer to be prepared for student success. Author Zig Ziglar famously said, "You don't have to be great to start, but you have to start to be great." So we're jumping in with both feet. And we, while we can't guarantee the beginning of the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year will be perfect, but through the hard work of our students and employees and with your support, and thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for your support, we look forward to making it a great school year and for our kids to achieve better than ever, ever before. So I say, let's saddle up for an award-winning year because I think our kids are going to blow this away. So.
Karen?
Thank you.
When will the parent engagement piece be ready?
It is getting very close right now. The site has been built. There's a few links that aren't all the way done. You know, we, we're doing it as they're coming. So we've worked really hard on the principal part, and then we moved as fast as we could to making sure all the teacher pieces were ready for this week. And we're, you know, running a day behind what we wish for that. And right now, they're in the middle of building that parent site. I got to see it last night. I'm so excited about all that's there. And I think it's going to help. A lot of the schools have already put some of those pieces together and are already rolling out some of it to parents as they're figuring it out. But it'll be a package by the end of this week.
Okay, good. I'm a nervous grandparent, so I need all the help I can get.
Yes, ma'am.
Question, Karen?
Oh, yes.
Are the virtual kids, do they have the same schedule, let's say, they would have had if they were a face-to-face? Okay, so the same.
Yeah, very, very close. It's very close. And all of the, not all of the schools, many of the schools are running the exact same schedule.
Okay, so let's say I'm a student. I can't work on English before history because I like that subject better.
Yeah, you're going to have synchronous beginnings to the class periods, and you'll have that schedule. And so you'll need to be in class for that opening. And then they can do independent work after that, and it'll be the regular schedule. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the, the reason I ask that is because if, if I have that seven-hour school day, what would be the need of contacting my teacher at nine P M? Why would that teacher not be able to get ahold of me in that seven-hour day?
Our hope is that this time, they will be contacting their teachers because there'll be a set schedule at every school. Here's the times where you'll be with the teacher. Here's when the teacher will be available beyond that. We're also setting up, which we did this in the spring really late, when we, you know, got to this, and we set up tutoring and, and help for kids in the evenings. And some of the Guidance Center folks are working on a schedule to offer that again, starting very early this semester. So that won't be coming so late as it did. But there are some kids who are going to do some of the actual work part and the independent work in the evenings and the nights, and we know that. But we are trying to have certified and maybe some college students available during the evenings to help them out and not have our teachers having the emails, texts, and phone call, phone calls coming in at night. Some of them say they want it, but that's going to get really old and a whole, during a full school year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions of Karen?
I think what, I'm sorry, Vicki, go ahead.
Go on, go on, Jack.
I, I think what Maricel's talking about is very important. You know, we, we could wear these folks out. And for the convenience of the family and the kid, and I just, I don't see how we could allow that to happen. You wouldn't expect that if. if you were paying them by the hour and every time that phone rang, you paid them. You, we'd figure out a way to minimize those things and it's, it's a I think it's more than just a consideration. I think it's, it's gotta be like that.
I I agree. And we are encouraging the teachers. Some did very well at this. And they just, you know, they, in the morning, they looked at the texts, they looked at the emails, they looked at the phone calls and they started addressing those with the kids, but they didn't do it during the evening or throughout the night. Some people, you know, they're very passionate about their work and they work throughout the night. And I don't know that I can stop them, but we are going to be putting things in place so they don't feel like the kids will be stranded at night. So I hope that that'll help them follow a schedule and help the kids follow a schedule.
For the ones that want to do it, that's great. If they tell their kids to call them anytime, you know what? More power to them. But just some sort of and it sounds like y'all have already done it. Hey, listen, this is not a
Working on it. It's not done.
Not a twenty-four-seven deal, you know?
That's right.
So you can go jack around and
Jack around with Jack?
Yeah.
No.
Anyway.
They gotta have, they gotta have a life. You're right, Jack.
I agree with Maricel.
Even if they think that it's okay, they got tired after three months. So we cannot, I don't think they can do it for a full year and survive. So we really need to make sure that they know those supports are available for them.
Well, I want to say that I, I can't say it enough, and I know the rest of us feel the same way. We're so grateful to everybody that's worked on this. It's not been easy. It has been, it has changed daily, if not hourly, in in many cases. And y'all have been, you know, you're true heroes as far as I'm concerned because you've worked out plans for almost any situation. And new situations will arise daily, I'm sure.
They will.
My gosh, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone who's been involved in this. And it has been a team effort, I know. And I
Tell you what, our our principals have been troopers too because just like TEA has given us things at the last minute. I mean, I feel like TEA is trying hard to give us what we need and to support us. But it's, you know, six weeks late. And I know I've talked to the principals several times. Like, I feel like TEA right now because I'm going to give you a support that you've already started to put in place. But it is in place now, you know, so we're running as fast as we can and our principals have given us a lot of grace. And they are working their tail ends off to make this really, really good for our kids. So I appreciate them. It's a team effort.
Yeah, it is. And I I just, that need, that message needs to go out that we are so appreciative. So. Okay, Dr. Powell, what do we have next?
Well, we have the reason we called the meeting in the first place. And that's a quick budget update because as y'all know, being experienced board members, we're getting to that point where y'all have to approve the budget for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one at the regular August board meeting. So there's been slight changes. So we just wanted to update you. We wanted to talk about the tax rate, even though we won't approve that until September. We're doing some posting in local newspapers and other legal requirements that we have to regarding the tax rate. So I'm going to ask Carla to come on. And for the sake of everyone's time, be brief, but be sure to cover everything and then answer any questions that our board members have. So that's our last piece today is to talk about Carla, you want to take it from here?
I've got it. And I will be quick. So let's start with, just like COVID, things change. Not only do we deal with that, but we have House Bill Three with the tax compression rate that we still have to deal with. So the way House Bill Three works is that they set a compression rate now. It's based on our current year tax values. And of course, you know, at this time, all we have is an estimate. We do not have certified values. HCAD said they will not have a certified values until August twenty-eighth. As you know, we will approve the budget on August twenty-fifth. And so with those dates, we had to post what we have estimated to be the highest possible tax rate. There is no guarantee that this is what it will end with when we see certified values. There is a chance that we will have to drop our compressed tax rate back down. So with that being said, at the highest possible that we could get on the MNO side would be a dollar seven, three, eight. And that brings in, because what we had ran the budget on beforehand was a dollar six. So with that extra penny, doesn't sound like a lot, but that extra penny brings in one-point-six million additional tax revenue dollars. So I've included that on our current tax levy as bringing in additional revenue at the highest that we could possibly go with the compressed tax rate if we come in at a four percent gain on the appraisal values. So if we get that, then our MNO tax rate, the highest that we could possibly set would be one-oh-seven-point-three-eight. So with the, that, like I said, brings in an additional, so that drops our deficit because last month we had estimated it to be an eighteen-million-dollar deficit. With that extra increase, that drops our deficit down to sixteen-point-seven million. Still a deficit because like we said, we are projecting for the unknown, a ninety-five percent tax collection rate because of COVID and people being unemployed. So we did take that into consideration. We had taken into consideration that how many students will we get ADA for? So we dropped that number down lower than what our normal rate would be that we would normally estimate on what we bring in. So that's our MNO side. And then we also looked at the INS side, and this is what's new that y'all haven't really seen. INS is just strictly to pay our debt. We try everything we can. Y'all approve refundings where we bring in revenue because we pay the cost. And every year, what our job is, is to pay the principal and the interest and to break even or as close to even as possible. With our tax rate where it is, that the twenty-eight cents, if we ran our tax base and the twenty-eight cents, we would show a deficit fund balance or hitting our fund balance of over six-point-five million if we leave our tax rate at twenty-eight cents. And remember, the goal for INS is to break even. We're not trying to make money because we don't want to make money. We want to pay the debt and not to hit us. Our current fund balance in the INS is twenty-eight million. If we continue to leave our tax rate at the twenty-eight cents of where it's been for years, then we will eat that fund balance money up and we will eventually run out. So at one point, we have to increase our INS tax rate. So for this year, on the ad that we put, and remember, this is just what we think the highest could be. It won't go any higher than what we've projected. We are asking for our INS tax rate to go up to thirty-one cents instead of the twenty-eight cents. It sounds like a big increase, but we're losing from our current MNO side. We're dropping down two cents because of the compression rate. And so really, what the taxpayer would see is really an increase of a point oh-oh-four-six. And that's all the increase that they would see, which really, for a person that has a hundred-thousand-dollar home value at a hundred thousand, it's about four dollars a year. So it's not a big increase that anyone would really see because it's four dollars and sixty cents if I ran the value with the difference on that increase. And like I say, this is just so we can pay the bills. It's not to make money. We are not trying to add to fund balance. We are just strictly trying to pay the bill. Also with House Bill Three, when they did those compression rates, not only did it affect that, but it affected how much money we received from the state. We, on our INS side, we used to receive about nine million dollars. That's dropping down to four million. And you can see why the need for us to increase those rates are happening. So those are my updates. They're very brief and you will see the ad because we are required to have the ad in the paper ten days prior to us passing the budget. So we'll pass the budget on the proposed tax rate. We will not approve of an official tax rate until September once we can see the price values to see, are we going to have to drop our INS and our MNO? INS, we won't have to drop. We can leave that at the thirty-one cents. But the MNO side, there is a chance when TEA does our final calculation on the compressed rate that we have to drop it back down to a dollar six. So I will not know until I see those final calculations that come through on August twenty-eighth. But we have to have a budget passed on our August twenty-fifth meeting or we cannot pay payroll anymore. So it's important that we estimate the highest tax rate and then we can always come down. So there is a good chance in September, not only will we approve the tax rate, but we may have a budget amendment at that time as well if the tax rate, they will not let us leave it at a dollar seven. This is the first time they've done this compressed rate based on current year that we're having to make these adjustments.
What a year. Thank you, Carla. I appreciate it. Anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to say that Carla sent y'all a PowerPoint that kind of goes over the tax rate, what it's been, what we've held steady for. We all know we did a successful TRE in the community. The majority were very much behind that. And then thanks to House Bill Three, we lost a lot of ground regarding that. So this is not a tax rate that's going to compare to other districts. She sent you surrounding district data as far as what they're paying in their communities. But I think it's very necessary on the INS side and the MNO side. So just wanted to reinforce to look at that PowerPoint. If you haven't, has a lot of good information.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Dr. Powell. Thank you, Carla. Appreciate it. Any other business that you know of, Dr. Powell?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
And I appreciate y'all. And if have any questions about this information or anything we talked about in the second session, just let me know.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to adjourn the meeting and somebody, oh, it's two-twenty-six PM.